Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coleman.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the December 16th, 2021 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Lomis?
Here.
Commissioner Bashertish? Commissioner Biddle? Commissioner Bowers?
Here.
Commissioner Kater? Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. Excuse me. Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project, along with their recommendations to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item.
Agenda item three, Public Statements.
Thank you. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on item 5A through 5C and item 6A, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item four, Consent Calendar Items.
Thank you. All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate consideration. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Wade, may I have a second, please?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Bowers, thank you. And please cast your vote. Am I missing it? Do you have one? I'm logged out. I'm logged in. I'm not logged out. All right, well, let's see if I log in. I guess you gotta have an... Oh, here we go. What she's doing right now. It's being done. This is AI. The robot's doing it for me. Hold on a minute. Oh, it's not gonna vote for me? Oh, okay. All right, then. How are we doing there, Madam Clerk?
Motion passes with Commissioners Bashertish, Biddle, and Kater absent.
All righty then. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Agenda item five, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item for further discussion? Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Okay, at this time, the consent public hearing items are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items? Not removed. Incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt.
That'd be Commissioner Bowers?
And I'll second that motion.
And Commissioner Wade, thank you very much. Yeah, I guess we're gonna... Well, we're gonna have to go ahead and vote. Here we go.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bashertish, Biddle, and Kater absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number six, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on the item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of all... of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. We have one item under public hearing tonight, which was opened at our October 21st, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Following public testimony at that meeting, the item was continued to November 4th, 2021. Subsequently, the item was continued again to tonight in order to give the applicant additional time to address public and agency comments. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your updated staff report?
Thank you, Chair Coleman. Good evening, Commissioners, members of the audience. Thank you for attending tonight. I will keep this presentation a little truncated since we went through the presentation on October 21st, but I just want to touch on some highlights for you. As a reminder, this project site is loaded... located south of State Route 119 or Taft Highway, approximately quarter mile west of Highway 99. The project is zoned M1 and M2. Truck stops are permitted use in the M2, but they are permitted use subject to approval of a conditional use permit in the M1, which is what your commission is considering tonight. This is a three-phase project. The first phase consists of the majority of the site will contain a truck, fuel, and scale area, a convenience store, food court, auto fuel for passenger vehicles, automobile parking, and a sump. The second phase to follow, approximately six months later, will contain the truck wash and lubrication and tire repair area and truck parking. And then the final phase will contain truck sales area and a freight broker office. The development plan has been reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee, consisting of the different departments that you see there, and the plans are in compliance with the development standards of the city. During this project, we did circulate the mitigated negative declaration for comments along with the public hearing notice. Comments were received that were included and addressed in the October 21st staff report and in this current staff report. Also, there was a memorandum that was done for the October 21st and a memorandum for tonight's hearing, and those have been provided to your commission. And your commission, as was noted, did take public testimony at the October 21st Planning Commission Meeting. There are two findings for approval of a conditional use permit. The first, that it is deemed essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare; and the second, that it is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan. If those conditions can't be met, it can be subject to conditions of approval to protect public health, safety, convenience, and/or welfare. Draft conditions are provided to your commission, and those conditions do allow your commission to make approval of a conditional use permit with those findings. You do have options tonight. You may approve the project with the recommended conditions. You may approve the project with modified conditions based on public testimony. If there are questions that cannot be answered, you may continue this project to a date certain. However, since we've already continued it for two months and with the holidays, it may be more appropriate to refer back to staff if there's questions that cannot be answered tonight, and that way we can make sure everything's addressed and we can come back at a future date that would be re-advertized, or your commission could deny the project. At this time, staff's recommendation is that you consider all the evidence that's being presented, all the testimony tonight, and you render a decision. This completes staff's presentation.
After public hearing... The public hearing on this item is open from the October 21st, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Rick Judge. Last name is J-H-A-J. I am from Countryside Construction and Development, a local developer here in Kern County, and been involved with this community for quite a while. And before I begin, I just want to first say thank you to my fellow Commissioners for hearing us tonight. You know, I know this project has been here a few times, and thank you guys taking the time out, especially during the holidays. I want to thank staff. They put a lot of time and effort on this. A lot of decisions have been put on this project. A lot of review has gone through this project, and Mr. Garrywall, my client, has done a lot of effort to make sure we can meet those conditions. I am the developer that's gonna be building the project for the client, for Mr. Garrywall, and that's why I'm speaking on the project tonight. And as you guys may know, this project's been around for coming on to almost three years, trying to get this project through and get it developed. And we actually stepped back to modify, to mitigate, and even to negate some concerns that came up early in the project, and we did that because we wanted to make sure when we came tonight in front of this commission that we came with our best foot forward, brought a quality project that we feel that you guys could get behind and support. And the great thing about this project is actually a one-of-a-kind center. It's being designed as a destination center, something that we don't have here in the City of Bakersfield, and something that's very unique to the area. This stop is going to be a 16,000-square-foot facility, which is gonna be anchored with a pilot, a fueling station, but along with that, it's gonna bring in national food brands like Fat Burger, Yogurtland, Pizza Hut, KFC, Coffee Bean, and Tea Leaf, Cinnabon, and my personal favorite, some Indian food, which you don't get the chance to get too often. So, all this will be housed in this building, in this facility, and it'll, again, be one of the first of its kind. And I think that's why I personally got excited about this project, is because it's something that this area needs. 119 has been in dire need of improvements, of money being invested, and it's been an area where so much traffic flows through, but people have been putting dollars into it. And so, Mr. Garrywall has decided to do that by taking on this acquisition of this land and by developing this project. Along with that, too, he's also considered, you know, what does the future of California hold? You know, with that, we've also brought in Tesla. So, we've got 16 Tesla charging stations will be a part of this site, along with solar on the main building, along with the gas canopies. We also have truck repair in the back of the facility, and also the biggest thing in place for travelers to stop, relax on a long drive, and shop, eat, and even shower if needed. You know, so this gives the local community and travelers that are coming through this area something to enjoy and amenities that are really missing in this area right now. And one thing about Taft Highway is a state-of-California designated truck route, and the city recognized that, and that's why this actually got annexed into the city. This used to be a county property, now it's just part of the city. And that comes back to my point that 119 with the designated truck route, there's a lot of traffic that's been gone down 119, and this project's gonna help improve a lot of infrastructure in front of 119, which is definitely needed. It's gonna help beautify our city landscape in that front area, bring curb, gutter sidewalk, which currently were never there before. So, to me, this project is something that's going to help beautify and help improve this area quite well. And on top of that, not only does it help improve 119, but it also is gonna be a great revenue source. This facility has been... Avenue gross revenue is gonna come in over 80 million of gross revenue annually, which in turn turns into taxable revenue dollars that come into the city. This is gonna put money into families' pockets. This is gonna give jobs to people. This location will give over 100 jobs to our local community, people that don't have income right now. Those 100 people will help feed families of hundreds and hundreds, and that is one reason why this project and the size of the project have been brought to this area because it's needed. We have so many people that currently are looking for jobs, looking in places to grow in income, and this site provides that. But a couple of comments that, you know, this project has gone through has been, you know, how do we deal with the transition of California? You know, this new push towards energy, you know, and also the other point was traffic. How does this impact? So, you know, again, we took a step back to look at these things. How do we, as developers, how does Mr. Garrywall come in and make this project a project that makes sense? And so, we took all those into consideration. And again, I mentioned earlier, we have 16 EV Rapid Level 3 chargers. It's gonna be one of the first of this kind on 119 with Tesla. A very big deal, bringing something into the community. It's gonna be considered an energy hub, offering all types of fuels, alternative fuels. It's gonna be biodiesel. We're gonna be looking at the idea of having single lane of CNG for natural gas, hydrogen, and provisions are being made for EV trucks when that actually happens and comes to fruition. So, we are planning for this not just to be a stop, but also to plan for future development. How can this site transition when California decides to transition in the next 15 years or so into more of energy compliant and away from fossil? So, you know, our client, Mr. Garrywall, has took all that into consideration, and our engineering team's taken that into consideration. We're actually gonna be investing in 300 kVA of photovoltaic panels. I mean, it would be placed on the Phase 1, and on top of that, we're gonna offer public transit passes to all the employees to use and from work and back in this project, again, to kind of mitigate traffic, mitigate people driving back and forth. So, again, trying to take all these things into consideration. And the thing that we want to talk about on the second side was the traffic. Always important, you know, and as a developer myself, as a gas hitch owner myself, there's something that we think about all the time. And so, with that, we really talked about how do we make sure circulation works here? And I mentioned earlier, 119's gonna be growing and developing. Caltrans is putting time in to expand 119. It's gonna allow for future development to come in, help take... negate the traffic flow that's coming through. We as well have done circulations and traffic reviews on this project, all which has been provided, and based upon those, that's where the design came from. And before I part and let my engineers talk more about the actual question you may have regarding the site overall, you know, one thing I just wanted to say, one thing that I'm very proud of when we come here to the city, which sets the City of Bakersfield apart to the rest of California, is that, you know, we pride ourselves being a city that doesn't stall development, helps development grow. You know, when it comes to things like solar, electronic energy, electric cars, Kern is leader in that, and because of that, it sets us apart from other areas, and we push for development. So, with that being said, this development is geared towards future energy, but that's not here today. So, for us, no developers are to come and do a truck stop that's full of charging stations because you can't make any income on that currently. There's not enough demand for that today, but we are planning that for the future. So, when someone may come and say, "Well, you know, these stations are difficult for energy and for how they might be decaying," but the reality is, is the demand's not there to support that for hydrogen trucks, but you know what? When they are, this site will be the first to be there, and that's what we've planned for the infrastructures there for that site. So, today, my ask is for you guys, our commission, to show support for this project, allow Mr. Garrywall to build the jobs, the tax revenue, infrastructure that we need to complete and utilize 119. I know something that our city managers, our city council, and our planning commissioners as well, we support development. We support new business coming to our area, and that's what Mr. Garrywall's trying to do, is bring development to an area that needs it, bring jobs to it that needs it. And as I mentioned earlier, I am a gas hitch owner myself, and sometimes it's difficult when projects come in, you worry, "Well, how's that gonna affect me? You know, am I gonna lose business with these people coming in?" And the reality is what makes us great in not only the City of Bakersfield and Kern, but in California and the United States in general, is, you know, capitalism and the ability to allow people to develop. When you develop a center like this, you develop an area that needs attention, it spurs more growth, it spurs more traffic, and all the people around grow from it. And I use an example of my own. We own a station off 119 and 43, along Center 43. I've had our first station out there back in 2000. We were the only station out there. Did phenomenal. Since that point, today, we've had four other stations open next to us, but what we have done, we've grown year over year, 10% at least. What that shows us is because traffic... That when people grow, traffic comes and helps everyone around you, and that's what we want to do. We want to bring a project that's gonna be a strong project for the community, that's been well thought out, well planned out, and I hope you guys from our commission and the recommendation from the staff, has not made a full recommendation, but their overall review of the process, hopefully I can get the support of our commission to support this project and allow this development to come through. So, with that being said, I'm here for any questions, but I would like to turn it over to our engineer that could answer any of the questions you may have about the technicalities of the project, and I'm here for any questions as well. So, again, thank you, Commissioner, for your time, and I would, if you don't mind, I would ask our engineer from Pinnacle to come up and speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, honorable Commissioners and staff. My name is Matt Favilla. I'm the engineer of record, also the applicant for the conditional use permit before you tonight. Of course, we want to thank staff. They've been incredible through the whole process. Just want to maybe add a little supplement to some of the things that Rick had mentioned. You know, on behalf of the owners, we have reviewed the conditions. We're in agreement with all of the conditions. Rick had mentioned that this has been a long process to get this before you, about four years. You know, one time, we had an approved parcel map, an approved site plan for the truck stop, but the owners went back to the drawing board, and that was in consultation with city traffic engineers and Caltrans. We've had a lot of discussions with those folks, and the connection to Campanione was well-received, just for overall circulation. Again, we've had so many discussions with Caltrans. They've reviewed our traffic impact study intensely, and all the environmental studies have been reviewed thoroughly. I do want to mention that Caltrans does have its own widening project for Taft Highway, which will run from the interchange all the way, I believe, to Ash Road. They are, you know, they will remedy structural sections along Taft Highway, widen the roadway. We don't have all the specifics. They haven't shared those with us yet, but we're working with them. But what they told me is that will also improve safety and level of service for Taft Highway. Again, I think Rick mentioned that Taft Highway is a designated STA truck route, meaning it was designated back in the 80s to receive heavy truck traffic. Another, just maybe a minor point, but this project will remedy a lot of drainage issues in that area. The owners, to extend Campanione through, purchased additional land. That goes through an existing sump that's privately owned. The sump that we build as part of the project will replace that. It will handle drainage not only from the project, but for most of Campanione development and future development. There are some challenges with the design. We have a canal that crosses the road there. We have to extend that canal covert on both sides. We've had numerous discussions with Kern Delta. They've indicated they're in support of the project. We've provided a couple options for their consideration. We also have to get them and Caltrans together. We've shared our information with Caltrans as part of their design process. But again, we appreciate all the responsiveness and helpfulness that we had from city staff. That concludes anything I have to say. I hope if there's any questions, you'll call on me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak in favor of the project? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Chairman Coleman and Planning Commissioners, it's good to be here again. I was here a couple of months ago in front of the commission, talking about this project. I didn't know whether to get up in support of the project or opposed to the project as we...
Yeah, you forgot to say...
I'm sorry. Bob Swanson. No, not everybody knows me, but I wear my name on my belt, so you know my first name. How's that? I'm a local civil engineer, Swanson Engineering. The person I'm representing owns the AMPM at the southwest corner of Campanione and State Route 119, Mr. Patel. The owner is not opposed to the project, so I can't say I'm speaking against the project, but I'm speaking against the design of the project and the effect it has on his business. I submitted a rebuttal once I got the revised staff report on Friday. I tried to get the rebuttal in, I think it was Tuesday, and I got a response to my rebuttal today at 1:00, and I've been trying to go through that and make a comprehensive reply to that. So, I will read pretty much the letter that I just handed out to you. Comment one that I was responded to is regarding an M2 use on a light industrial zone. I was concerned that an M2 use isn't allowed by the matrix, the land use matrix. I'm not a planner. I don't enjoy planning things, so whatever the planning department determines is appropriate, that's fine with me. Comment two, I still have a concern. It's regarding the structural design of Campanione. I agree in the city's response that the city has a standard traffic index of six that they use for local industrial streets, which Campanione fits in. There is a caveat in the city standard that says, unless otherwise directed, which gives the city the ability to change the design, the structural design of a industrial street, any of the streets, actually. I believe it will be a great disservice to the city's taxpayers to have to mitigate premature pavement failure on Campanione in particular. If Gruel and Bueller Street both get designed with a TI of six, I think it'll be a pretty much disaster within five to 10 years that the streets will fail. And if that happens, I think the developer's off the hook and the city's on the hook, and I care for the city and I care for the money that the city spends. And I care for the city, and I care for the money that the city spends fixing those things. I would like to ask, and I don't know if you have the answer or anyone here has the answer, what the traffic index is going to be designated for Bueller and Grual when they design that? If that's going to be a six, or whether the city's going to upgrade it? And I would hope the city upgrades it. I will still stand by my design of 556 trucks using Campanione inbound. It's the closest estimate we could get from the traffic study. And I still believe for the pilot, which has 556 trucks coming in and 2,731 cars coming in, that's a whole big change from what it was originally used for. I still believe the traffic index should be 11 and 1/2, and that comes out to a pavement section of seven and 1/4 inches of AC over nine inches of base. The current street's designed with three and 1/2 inches of AC over five inches of base. Substantial increase of what the street should be designed, in my engineering opinion. Comment three, still have a concern about the default values in the traffic study. There, I saw Matt's response to that. I can point out a couple things, and that's all I'm going to do. He said there's no indication of what State Route 119 speed limit is. I have two pictures, if you'd like to see them, from Google. Google never lies, nor does the internet. They both have 40 mile an hour posted speed limits, one's at H going westbound on State Route 119, and one's right before the Union Oil Station on State Route 119. So the 40 miles an hour, I would disagree with Matt's reaction to that. Slower speeds mean there's less capacity on the roadway, cars can't go as fast to get through there. The percent of trucks listed in the traffic study, it's shown at 3% in one place in the study, 6% in another, and 14% in another. So I think there's some discrepancies in the amount of trucks that are using that. The biggest issue I have on State Route 119 is the queue distance for the westbound left turn lane at Campanione. It's coming right over the freeway from the off-ramp, off-ramp of 99, comes off to the right, you have to make a left to go up to 119, you're on H Street, and when you turn left on 119, you cross over 99. And looking at the bridge, and I think I have an exhibit K in the handout that I did, you see the left turn lane, and you see what I would envision of a pilot truck stop where we've directed 80 to 90% of the trucks turning left there onto Campanione to access the pilot. I think you're going to have a stacking problem right there. And the stacking problem is going to block the overpass for westbound traffic. I think it's going to block the on-ramp to southbound 99 for traffic. I think the through traffic's going to be a nightmare. The traffic study shows 3.7 cars stacked in that left turn lane as the 50% level, which means half the time there will be more than that, and half the time there will be less. For the through lane, there'll be 6.9 cars stacked going through there. The distances they used in the traffic study assume those were all 26-foot cars. With a pilot truck stop, Love's Truck Stop, any truck stop, I think you need to account for trucks in those lanes, and I think that was an omission that needs to be resolved. On opening day, I still have concern, I think the owner does, as what the traffic on 119 and Campanione and Grual is going to look like. The traffic, not the traffic, the staff report says in one place that traffic will be, pilot will be accessed by Campanione Street. And that would be true if there's no left turn in to the Grual Street. The other point in the staff report says that the traffic will be a right in, right out on Grual, which I believe is true. Any traffic coming from 99, any truck or car traffic coming from 99 northbound is going to turn on Campanione Street. That's going to be a huge load, and we understand that development causes increased traffic, but the amount of traffic increase and the amount of trucks is going to be tremendous. The biggest issue is any trucks wanting to turn left from the pilot project are going to use Grual and then Bueller and then Campanione, and come to the signal and try and turn left. That will affect my client by not allowing access out of his site to turn left at the signal. I foresee huge stacking issues right there because of this project. Besides the access, those two accesses are right in, right out, and besides the statement that all traffic will use Campanione, there was also a reference to an exhibit B1 and B2 in the report. And the B1, which is my exhibit H that I put in my thing, shows a left turn in only onto Grual. If that goes in, then you're dealing with other problems with the Aherne Truck Rental to the east of the pilot project, the Mobile Sea Store, and the Union Oil Sea Store on the north. The tapered non-access strip that was in that exhibit doesn't keep going, but I'm assuming it keeps going until it hits a point. And those kinds of strips are double yellow lines, which are illegal to cross. I don't think Union will have quite as bad a problem, but Mobile will not be able to have a left out, and they will not be able to have a left in to access them. Sea Stores access is very important. There's no place to do U-turns if you have to leave the Mobile or the Union and you have to turn right. There's no U-turns in State Route 119 until you get to Enos Lane, and you go through the loop, and then you can come back. Legal U-turns. For the Aherne Equipment Rental, and I'm not representing these guys, I'm just, I care about business and taking care of them. The Aherne will have no left turn in if that right, if the left turn goes into Pilot, they'll have no left turn in, they'll have no left turnout. So equipment that leaves Aherne will have to turn right. They will have to go past the 99 off-ramp, they'll have to go over the freeway and go to H Street. There's no prohibition against a U-turn at H Street, but their equipment will not make it without running into the dirt. So access for Aherne will be a problem, and I think that will likely hurt or possibly, I would say possibly, destroy the business. A beta weed on Rosedale Highway, when the northwest promenade went in, had a problem, they contacted Caltrans, they had to get legal people involved in Caltrans, finally had to come back and build a left turn lane into the, into the A beta weed, because they have gardeners with trucks that couldn't make the turns to get back into there. So I have concerns with traffic. I don't know that I've heard an answer of how traffic's going to be handled, except maybe this, maybe that. I don't think that's sufficient to approve a project like this without knowing the implications for the AMPM, the Chevron, the Union, the Mobile, or Aherne Equipment Rentals. The last thing I'll say here, there's been talk about a traffic signal. I have, I will state that I think the best option for opening day mitigation is to construct a signalized intersection at Grual and 119. This will take care of the Campanione traffic situation, it will take care of the traffic index on Campanione, whether the street can handle the increased traffic. The tie from Bueller to Campanione, that's fine, it can stay there, I don't think it will be used nearly as much. The, it'll act more like a secondary emergency entrance or exit if there's ever a blockage of the signal at Grual and State Route 119. From what I understand, Caltrans is amenable to a signal, as well as the developer, and with proper design, I think you can take care of Aherne, I think you can take care of Union, I think you can take care of Mobile very easily. I don't believe waiting six months, as is one suggestion, to see if a signal is warranted is the proper direction to pursue. The disruption to the businesses for that six-month period, and I'm going to estimate a year and a half to go ahead and design, permit, and construct a new signal. I don't believe that is in the best interest of the city or the nearby businesses. Thank you very much for lending me time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Are there any other speakers that wish to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name, and proceed. Okay. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, it's only a time Commissioner Wade.
Thank you. I guess this question to staff, Mr. Swanson brought up a lot of concerns about the traffic study, where he isn't suggesting that he has a different opinion, he was saying that it's done incorrectly, such as the speed limit, the calculation of cars stacking rather than trucks stacking. And I guess I'd just like to hear city's response to the claim that the traffic study is insufficient.
To the chair, thank you, Commissioner Wade. I can respond to quite a few of Mr. Swanson's comments, but specifically to the traffic study, I think if we would have the applicant's engineer come forward and respond to those would probably be more appropriate. And then on the specifics of that, if there's additional questions, I will defer to the public works.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt Vovella, LAV Pinnacle Engineering. I know Bob quite well, I respect his opinions on things, worked with him for a number of years. Yeah, sure. Better? I was just taking a few notes on Bob's objections to the traffic study. We prepare a very thorough study. I'm not going to say there's not some minutia that somebody can pick at in the study. Normally, when we get these comments, we look back at our data. Percentages of truck traffic are actually from our own counts out there. We counted this thing, including percentages of truck traffic pre-COVID and during COVID. Generally, the volumes fell during, you know, after February of 2020, I believe. I can't, you know, I don't disagree with Bob that the Campanione structural section, which isn't a part of the traffic impact study, that's, is, you know, will always be adequate, that road's 14 years old. It was designed at a time from city standards, not, probably not knowing everything that would ultimately go in. But I believe that concern has been mitigated by the conditions, which indicate that Campanione will be reconstructed. Again, percentages of truck traffic are from our own counts. We always also did driveway surveys. Our traffic studies are very conservative. Our hands are a little bit tied on these things because traffic studies are cookbookish. You have to, you know, look in a book and figure out the trips that are there. Our own driveway surveys at the AMPM and the other establishments there indicate 78% of the traffic is pass-bys, meaning it's already on the road. And those are, you know, you turn into a station or something as an impulse. The other 22% is diverted link, which means they come from the freeway and they get back on the freeway. There's a very good argument to say that these facilities don't increase traffic that much. But also, when we get comments, what we do, we think, we ask ourselves, well, is there a point to be made there? And we rerun the calculations to see if it makes any difference. We did that, and differences in delays and level of services were really negligible, and it didn't change the results of the traffic study at all. Again, you know, I mentioned the structural section on Campanione, I believe that...
I'm sorry to interrupt you about the, because that'll be part of your rebuttal. Just want to make sure that we're just dealing with the question that I asked. So you did address the traffic study.
We did, yes, and we responded...
And you'll have a minute to rebut when this is done.
I'd like to make just one more comment.
Is it pertains, if it pertains to my question, then yes.
Yeah, it's regarding the traffic signal that Mr. Swanson mentioned.
So that, that doesn't pertain to my question, sorry.
It doesn't?
Yeah, but, but I'm sorry, just one last little thing. So you're saying that the, the speed limit difference that Mr. Swanson brought up, it wouldn't have a substantial impact?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No.
I would like the opportunity to discuss the...
You get a chance to rebut, yeah.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions for the public or staff? You want to hear the rebuttal? Okay. I have a question for staff. Are there any agencies in opposition to this project?
We have not received any comments in opposition from any agencies.
Okay. Do you know what the schedule is for Caltrans widening project on 119?
We do not.
Okay, now is the time for rebuttal. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will be given five minutes, so make your comments succinct without repeating the remarks of previous speakers, to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so.
I won't interrupt you this time.
Matt Clark, start the clock, please.
Matt Vovella, LAV Pinnacle Engineering. I think I did most of my rebuttal in answering your question, Commissioner Wade, I apologize for that. But I do want to...
Excuse me, sorry. Dana, can you, the clock? Thank you.
We're waiting for a technical issue here to get the clock going.
This won't take long.
We spent a lot of money on that clock, so we want to use it. We're going to have it in-service here soon on how to run the thing. There we go. Thank you.
All right. Matt Vovella, LAV Pinnacle Engineering. I think the only thing that I didn't mention was Mr. Swanson's comment on the traffic signal at the future intersection of Graywall and Taft Highway. We don't disagree with that, so we think that's a very good suggestion. In fact, the owner is obligated to pay for that design and construction. We would like the opportunity to study the intersection once traffic is developed and people find the facility and start using it, so we get accurate truck data and traffic counts. The six-month period, that's, you know, that's the time required just to discuss it with Caltrans and, and just work out all the parameters of the design. We request that it's, if it is required, it's not required on opening day of the project. So that concludes my rebuttal. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers that would like to speak in favor of the project during the rebuttal period? Please come to the microphone and state your name. You have... Do you reset the, we didn't have to reset the clock, did we? It was supposed to be five minutes total. Hold on there a minute.
I think there's like three minutes and 20 seconds left.
Okay, I will keep that in mind. Three minutes and 20 seconds left.
All right.
Well, fellow commissioners, Rick Judge again. And again, I'll keep my comments brief. I appreciate Mr. Swanson and his comments he made, you know, again, it's in everyone's best interest to do a project that will provide great flow and have ability to be functional. Mr. Graywall is not investing multi-millions of dollars in this project to have this project fail, or to have a situation to where they can't access or cause traffic to not be able to access the site. I just would comment to this, as I mentioned, you know, there is comments made of how this affects other business owners around them. You know, the point being is, there's no media is being developed right now, that's going to be down in the future. We're giving funds in for media development for the future. Also as well is too, if anyone understands traffic and understanding access to your site, I am firsthand. I had to deal with three different roundabouts with Caltrans for three of my sites, with gas stations, how to access them, and how that would impact my business, and how much I would worry. I went all the way up to the state Capitol with Caltrans head of director of Caltrans to discuss this project, and how that could affect our business. And what I will tell you then, that they told me then too, is, you know, it's, each project is looked at individually, you know, and when project development comes, we have to look at those projects when they come at that time. If we speculate, we can't develop. And as any developer knows, you know, if, we have to do our best to take the knowledge that we're given by the expertise we hire to make these projects come to fruition. And we have done that, we've hired engineers to do the traffic reviews, and based upon that, we have done everything we can to make sure that traffic flows well in this site. Currently, anyone, any truck could make a left onto Campanoni, it's not a restricted street, it's allowed truck traffic. All the rest of the site that we're working on is M1. It could be industrial buildings now with a bunch of trucks coming in. So, again, we are, we are, we are put that into consideration in our, and Mr. Graywall has put conditions in saying that we will review, you know, the future of the development, but allow traffic to build, allow this development to actually come to fruition. Because until then, you know, it's hard to have any developer look at and build something that they haven't even put a single truck on the road yet. And if we set a precedent to put off-site developments, don't even touch a property's project-
I'm sorry, the time is up.
Okay. No problem, well, thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, I was dozing.
And I just want to say thank you, commissioners, I hope you support this project, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, this will be a time for the rebuttal in opposition to the project. You'll have a total of five minutes.
I'm Bob Swanson, Swanson Engineering. The biggest question we have that has not been answered yet is, what is opening day traffic, turn lanes going to look like? And I don't think, I think that was the question we had two months ago, and I still don't think the question's been answered. So I think my client would appreciate a response to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people who would wish to speak in opposition or rebuttal? All right. I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action. Any commissioners have any, Commissioner Bowers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if I under, if my question is, or if the traffic issue has been answered. I keep hearing a lot of noise with respect to it, but I have a direct question, and I just want a direct answer. Is the applicant in favor of putting a signal there?
Commissioner Bowers? Yes, we are in favor of putting a signal in at that time. We just asked that it could be reviewed prior to the construction, because they will have to be redesigned and looked at if traffic flow requires it. That is a request. And we put that condition in, saying if traffic does require, we will more than welcome to put a signal in. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for staff, just a clarifying point. So in the M2, by right, a gas station can go in the M2, correct? And my understanding in the M1, it requires a conditional use permit, correct?
A gas station passenger fuel can be M1 or M2. Truck stop is permitted in the M2, and is permitted, subject to approval of a conditional use permit, in the M1. So it has been considered to be a use compatible with the M1, subject to conditions.
Thank you. No further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lomas.
Sure. I can comment, yes. I heard the same thing, a lot of noise, but I did pick up on a few things. Matt, you said that, when you were talking, answering Commissioner Wade's question, you said it, you didn't, you did the counts, and they were correct. But I don't understand, you did the counts, but you're adding a truck stop, so a truck stop would increase truck traffic. So I don't know how that's relevant. You also stated it wouldn't increase traffic. Yet, Rick, you said it was a destination place. That logically would mean it's going to increase traffic. So the solution to this is the signal. It's common sense that it's going to increase traffic. And there's a lot of flaws with the way that this is configured and the proximity to Route State Route 99. So I would only entertain being in favor if the signal was there on opening day. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. Any other commissioners that have any questions or comments? Commissioner Wade.
Question to staff, and if you can't answer this question, I understand. In your expertise, would a signal on 119 take traffic pressure off of Campanoni Street? A substantial amount of traffic pressure?
If I couldn't answer a question, I would be sure to get back with you. A signal at Gruel and Taft Highway would obviously, yes, lessen traffic on Campanoni Street. I would caution the commission, though, that the standards and policies for the development of Taft Highway, which were approved by the Board of Supervisors and City Council and Caltrans specifically state that signalized intersections will be permitted at minimum half-mile spacing. I would note that there already is an existing traffic signal, 800 feet to the east at Campanoni. So Caltrans may not approve another traffic signal at this location.
And they would, you know, whatever their opinion, it would supersede whatever the city of Bakersfield wants to do?
It is a Caltrans road.
Yes, sir. I think we dealt with that with some Westside Parkway, or the Thomas Roads stuff.
If it would appease your commission, I can draft a condition that you can consider. If you give me a minute, while we take some additional questions from your commission, that would at least require the applicant to engage with Caltrans, engage with the city to find out if it is feasible, and if it is feasible, maybe one is installed. The timing, in this case, I would agree with the applicant, opening day may not be appropriate. But I can draft a condition if it so pleases your commission.
Mr. Judge has an impeccable reputation, so, you know, I trust his word. But just from a city governance standpoint, what kind of assurances would we have, that those things would be done in a way that isn't skewed towards reducing expenses for the developer? Anything they could do to disincentivize putting a light in?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Mulley, I thought I was tracking with your question, but I may have got off topic.
I'm just saying, what, I'm wondering what we could do to make sure that there is serious consideration, as much as possible that could be done, to consider a light, rather than just putting some unenforceable wording in saying, hey, take a look at it. Because I know that if I was negatively affected by those traffic patterns, that would make me very unhappy, if we put something with no guts in there.
And again, I tend to agree with the applicant, that opening day may not be the best choice. Let the operation get, you know, a year under its belt, and then do, like I'll say, a feasibility study to see what a traffic signal would accomplish at that intersection. In the meantime, they may be able to go to Caltrans, and then Caltrans may say no right away, and then, you know, a study isn't warranted. I would also note, if I may, and this is also a response to one of Mr. Swanson's questions, in that same policy manual, it does state that access to commercial properties, not streets, but actual commercial properties, will eventually be right-in, right-out only. Crossing expressways or Taft Highway to take a left, in the future, may not even be feasible.
Right.
Other than at a signalized intersection.
Right. Which Caltrans doesn't seem to want to allow, so close to another signal. Got it.
I could have swore somebody just said here, I don't know, Mr. Swanson or the applicant, that said that Caltrans had already agreed to that light at Gruel. Did somebody say that, or did I hallucinate that? Sorry if I said the name wrong, I apologize.
LAV Pinnacle Engineering. We don't have a formal approval of that signal. In my discussions with the senior design engineer working on that widening, I didn't bring it up, he brought it up. He thought a signal was appropriate there. You know, we can show plenty of places around this town and every place else where the spacing of signals is actually probably less than what we would have in this scenario. So to answer your question, we don't have formal approval, but they had mentioned that it would probably be inappropriate.
Okay, thank you. Do any other commissioners have any comments? I'd like to make a couple of comments. Okay. Good. Commissioner Wade.
I think I'd just also like to state to the applicant that this is great, the tax dollars, the, as, I'm a business owner, I know what it's like to take a risk on something and to put a bunch of money into something. I mean, I know you wouldn't do it if you didn't feel there's a good chance of success, but I mean, Bakersfield doesn't have an official pro-development stance. However, I'll tell you that we do welcome people making investments in the community and paying tax dollars and hiring people, and I think that's admirable, that someone, when they take a risk, essentially on the city of Bakersfield. So just in terms of the project in general, that's appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. I was just going to comment that, you know, we've already committed to truck stops in this area, we have one approved on the other side of 99 at 119. So in general, I like the project. I did struggle a little bit with that map, and I, at first, I didn't have an issue with the Campanoni Street, but I have to give Mr. Swanson some credit for that Exhibit K, because I didn't realize that it was going to back up onto that overpass at 99, and I don't think that's a good deal. I don't know how to resolve that, and I like the idea of the light at Graywall, but, you know, we can make whatever conditions we want here, and there's no guarantee that Caltrans is ever going to give us the light at Graywall. So, yeah, I don't know where we go from here. Mr. Johnson, did you have any thoughts on that?
I would say the ultimate decision is with Caltrans, it is their road. Whether it's a light, whether it's a left turn in, that would be up to Caltrans.
We, during our, after our last meeting, we had some conversation with staff about being prepared to discuss this at this meeting, and we were thinking that we were going to get somebody from Public Works or even Caltrans to talk about what their plans are for traffic on this road. It's time for them to step up at this point, because the building is, all this stuff's getting built here, and, you know, we had that same concern when we approved the truck stop on the other side of the highway, is what Caltrans planned for that bridge at overcrossing, so.
I do not have a response to provide to that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bowers.
Mr. Johnson, quick question for you. Does the city ever send a, I don't know if you call it a strong letter to the state, but do they ever suggest or send strong letters to Caltrans suggesting specific concerns like this that we have? Just to say, hey, guys, we foresee an issue coming up here, we need you to weigh in on that. Do we ever?
Typically, if it's coming from the city, it will come on either the mayor letterhead or city council letterhead, and city council will approve of that.
Any commissioners want to have any more questions or want to make any motions? Commissioner Bowers would like to make a motion, you might give him a minute. I'm sorry, hold on a minute. Mr. Johnson, you were talking about putting together a recommendation, just the two of you were huddling over there, to address some of Commissioner Wade's comments. Did you have, had you prepared that? Or did I misunderstand you?
No, you understood me correctly. Did you want me to prepare something? If you give me literally 30 seconds, I can do that.
Well, I'd like to hear what you have to say. We'd like to hear what you have to say.
I mean, I did look at the condition that the applicant was offering up. I kind of considered that wording a little deferred, conditions, deferred, I don't want to call it mitigation, but typically, we don't like to defer. So it could be, an option could be, one year after completion of Phase 1, the project proponent shall conduct a feasibility study for the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Gruel Street and State Route 119. Should the study identify that a signal is warranted, the project proponent shall coordinate with the city of Bakersfield Public Works Department and the California Department of Transportation. If approval is granted, and this last part comes from the applicant, the project proponent shall fund the design and improvements for the installation of the traffic signal. That's kind of bits and pieces from what the applicant had.
Commissioner Wade.
You mentioned one year there as the time to do the study after the opening. Is that the right amount of time, or is that? I mean, if there is a significant traffic impact in the area that's been underappreciated, say, that's a long time to have your business blocked by trucks.
It's a two-year project, you're going to hear a year from then, right? A year from the study.
Right, right.
So we can lower that, or you can have that engagement right now?
Yeah, okay.
Again, I was just offering this up.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. Good, Mr. Wade.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we, and so, I'm sorry, but Commissioner Wade, we could just start it off with the project proponent shall conduct a feasibility study, if you would like that to start right now, or we can say, within six months of completion of Phase 1, within 90 days of opening day, I'll leave that to your commission.
Would there be some kind of bond associated with that? How will you know we're going to get them back to the table two years from now and put a signal light in? Because you say a feasibility study, six months a year from now, you're a year from doing, once you do the feasibility study, you're a year from putting an intersection in. So how does that, how are we assured that that actually gets done? I'm sorry.
To speed up the process, you could say, potentially, we could add in prior to initiation of Phase 3. To speed up the process, you could say potentially we could add in prior to initiation of Phase 3.
Okay, thank you.
And that way, before they start Phase 3, they would have to have that signal in if it was approved and warranted.
Thank you. Commissioner Lomas.
Paul, you mentioned that Caltrans was talking about inferring that these signals aren't going to be allowed down the road. Where did that information come from?
That comes from a 2020 City Council Policy Memorandum. And it also, the Board of Supervisors, Kern County Board of Supervisors and Caltrans have each approved their own identical policy memorandum for that. And it's a policy that we use for improvements along Taff Highway. One of the items in here that's unusual is, and I don't want to say unusual, but is different or unique is they require a 30-foot landscape strip where the city typically only requires 15 feet.
Okay, I'm a little confused now. So, but you had, I had heard specifically that you said Caltrans in the future would not be allowing signals. And that, that's what I heard. Did I not hear it?
No, I'm sorry, that's the way it came across. No, I'm saying right now, that's in the policy.
And left turn, as a left turn is what I heard.
In the future, that'll be up to Caltrans to decide. And being that this policy now is nine years, almost 10 years old, maybe it's time that Caltrans revisits the policy and they would be fine with a signal less than a quarter mile away.
But didn't I hear you say something about they're not going to be allowing left turns onto?
Within the policy, yeah, within the policy, it says along commercial areas, it would be right in, right out only to and from Taff Highway. That's what the policy currently states.
So, am I correct in assuming that the signal will not happen then, no matter how many, how you ask or when you ask?
Other than it's been nine years, maybe they've looked at it and things have changed since then.
But we don't know. Okay, thanks.
All righty.
Can I say something?
Who's that?
It's Mike.
Oh, okay. I can't see, go to the mask, who's?
I think I'm trying, what you're trying to ask is there will be signals every half a mile just at the street, but they will not allow left turnouts from driveways. So, commercial properties like the, across the street, the mobile and Jack in the Box and other driveways, they will not allow left turnouts. But at the intersections, they will have signals.
She speaks girl. Thank you. Okay, so, so then Grual is a possibility to have a signal except for the proximity to Campanione.
That's right.
Campanione?
Campanione, yes.
That's, that's.
That's right. It's an intersection, it's a street, so it could have a signal except it's not a half a mile away, so.
And is that to Caltrans or is that city-county? Half mile?
It's, that document that Paul mentioned, that's what's-
City-county?
It's the Taff Highway.
It would be the city-county. So, on county land, they have the same policy as does the city.
So, that's the sticking point, but Caltrans would be okay with it in theory?
Well, Caltrans is saying that that's what they don't want. And I'm sorry, I may have said quarter mile, but it is a half mile. But Caltrans is saying they do not want any signals less than a half mile spacing apart.
Okay, so we're back where we started. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Bowers. Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion. You know, Mr. Swanson makes a compelling case and it seems like we have a big bark but no bite when it comes to enforcing this with respect to the fabulous folks from Caltrans. You know, look, to echo my colleague up here, Mr. Wade, you know, we are definitely a business-friendly community and we love to see developments. And, I mean, nothing, you know, screams louder when you see people who are working to be a part of that American dream. It's a big risk, but with that said, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I have to structure this. And seeing that Mr. Swanson is not in opposition to the project, but he has the same questions and I think we get more confused trying to figure this traffic. The more I ask questions, you know, I keep, you know, we could be here next year having, hearing Part 5, trying to figure this out. And so, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit. But I need, staff, can you help me? I'd like to, you know, look at just putting the conditions, the six-month language conditions with Phase 3. I think you mentioned that, Paul.
If you would like to make the motion for six months, yes, I can add that condition in. I would also like to note, it is addressed in our staff report and the applicant did not bring it up, but they are also requesting the removal of Condition 3B24, which requires a solid masonry wall next to property that's designated residential. And there is a portion of property designated residential that they have requested that the wall be removed. I'm not sure if they're fine with putting the wall up. I'll let them speak to that.
Thanks, Paul.
But if you're ready.
Commissioner Wade, comment before you complete your, before you complete your motion?
So, without even stating anything about my thoughts on the motion, just a suggestion, I'm looking at Phase 1, 2, and 3. I don't know that making Phase 3 contingent upon the study being done has any teeth to it. If you look where, I mean, Phase 3, I'm sorry, but, and I, I also don't know the pace of development. I don't know when Phase 2 is going to happen, but Phase 2, making Phase 2 dependent would have more teeth. If there's any teeth in this at all, since Caltrans probably won't approve it anyway, but.
The applicant has indicated in the past that Phase 1, prior to being continued from October, was to commence spring of this coming year. Phase 2 would be six months later, fall of this coming year. Phase 3 was going to be a year following. So, by spring of 2023, the project was supposed to be done. I don't know if that's still the applicant's timeline or not.
Commissioner Bowers, you want to complete your, do you have more questions? Can the applicant approach, please? Please keep your comments directly to Commissioner Bowers' questions, please.
Yes.
Could you kind of answer that question that you heard?
Yes, so with that, I would say that we as the applicant have no problem putting that condition on prior to Phase 2. That is fine with us as a condition. So, we are amenable to that if that satisfies the commission.
So, did you want to, Commissioner Bowers, you started to make a motion, but there was a, your comment about deleting the wall around there that I guess maybe I missed that. Yeah, so that's, yeah, we're back to the applicant again, I guess. You know, we ran into this on the last one and we probably didn't put enough teeth into the last one on as far as the block walls between the-
If I may draw your attention to the slide that's up right now. In the middle, right there where the, the green designation is, they would be required to put a block wall just in that portion, six foot tall masonry wall.
Just in that portion?
Just in that portion, per city development standards.
Okay. Yeah, well, I would have walked away.
I would, if I may, also note that the applicant owns that property there, so it's not under a different ownership. So, the applicant owns both sides of that wall. The applicant has indicated it's not an issue.
Well, I'm probably going to drop my opposition to it at this point, so, opposition to the opposition, so, okay. We're back to Mr. Bowers, Commissioner Bowers, and you, have you completed your thought on the motion? Are we understanding what we're motioning? You started out with a motion to approve of the condition, the six-month language, and it was regarding Phase 2, tied into Phase 2.
If I may help Commissioner Bowers, so the project would, or the request would be to approve the mitigated negative declaration, approve the conditional use permit, adding a condition that says, "Prior to issuance of any permits for Phase 2, the project proponent shall conduct a feasibility study," so on and so forth. I can read the whole condition if you'd like. So, that doesn't necessarily give a timeline, but it's saying, "Prior to any issuance of any permits for Phase 2, this shall be done." Or we can add, "Within six months or prior to issuance of Phase 2, whichever is less."
So, Commissioner Wade, do you have any more thoughts? Okay. Okay, so that, so you want to make the motion as stated by Director Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion as stated by Director Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, would you like to read that motion in entirety? Would you like a minute?
No, I don't need a minute.
Okay, thank you.
So, the motion would be to adopt a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit incorporating Condition 3B25, which says, "Prior to issuance of any permits for Phase 2," and you can correct me if I'm wrong, "the project proponent shall conduct a feasibility study for the installation of the traffic signal at the intersection of Grual Street and State Route 119. Should the study identify that the signal is warranted, the project proponent shall coordinate with the city of Bakersfield Public Works and the Department of Calif, Department, and the California Department of Transportation. If approval is granted, the project proponent shall fund the design and improvements for the installation of the traffic signal." Or bond accordingly.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bowers. May I have a second? This is a point of order for, can I, can I, I know I can't make a motion, can I second a motion?
I don't think you can.
I'm sorry?
You cannot second the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we don't have a second. So, do any other commissioners like to make other motions?
I'll make the motion to deny.
Do we have a second on that motion? Do we have to make a motion to deny or we just don't take action against tonight? Or is there a, maybe, I don't know. I'll get the book out. Commissioner Wade would like to comment while we're waiting.
I want this development to happen. I want to know a light can go there and then it's easy. It's not perfect for the people around you, but it would work for me if I knew a light could go there. If, yeah, if you have something to add, because I'm trying to find a way to get to this.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade, appreciate you coming up. And again, I will say as the applicant, we do want to signalize light there. We're, by no means are we at all opposing that, to do that. And I think the question we were trying to clarify here is, the reason why they're saying Phase 2, which I agree on, is a comment earlier, M2 zone, this station can be built without it coming to the commission and be approved and be, building permits. They could do that right now. So, what it is, is because we're doing an overall development for the rest of the phasing, that is why the CUP is here in front of the commission tonight. So, the request is being, is that we want the development to go through and have a light. We will do whatever it takes to do that. Again, I spoke to earlier, it's, they're all, just like anything else, there are always guidelines that Caltrans has. But it is the opportunity, if the traffic is there and you apply for it, they always, sometimes can grant a variance. We have no control over that entity, but we will do everything as a developer to do that. But to stall a development on the future of hoping that this might not happen is something that is very, a hard precedent is set, I would say. Especially with approval across the street for another pilot, another truck stop that has happened, that did not have this issue. So, it was granted approval under the same conditions. So, I know maybe, definitely understand, to review that, but we want the signal. And again, the request would be if the commission would allow us to approve the project with the condition, it could be within 30 days to come in and do the study. There's not a time limit, we could do it immediately. It's just the idea is that we'd have to go through the process and apply for that with Caltrans. And I think it's like anything else, when Caltrans, when you apply to Caltrans and they see the traffic impact, they are pushed much harder to make modifications because it does affect the roads. So, asking for something right now, there's nothing there, it's hard to get approval. But once you have a site that's developed, you have traffic patterns that show that this site is impacting, they're much quicker to act. And with that, that's why the request I have to your commission, as mentioned earlier, Mr. Bowers mentioned, is, and approved to hope you get a second on it, is that we want the light. We don't have to put a restriction on the time. Only reason we mentioned Phase 2 is because this Phase 1 station by right can't be built without applying for CUP. So, I want to make that clarification. And so, a straight denial will not deny this project from being built in a sense because it can be separated out, but we made the choice to come to the commission as a whole, not piecemeal this to hopefully get our project. And so, we came as a whole to show you what we really want to do as a whole. So, we do want to get the light, so I would again request to the commission, appreciate Mr. Bowers for his motion. Hopefully, I could have fellow commissioner support a second. But we, I would request that that condition could be revised, Mr. Johnson, to state that we will immediately after operations is, the stores build, we will apply and do the conditions.
I'll just interrupt you here because we've heard your statement before and we appreciate your comments. I want to go back to the city attorney for a comment.
Yes, Chair Coleman. So, we don't have the votes for approval, we don't have the votes for denial. So, our only option is to continue the matter to a set date when we have more than four commissioners so that you can vote appropriately.
All right, with some, do we need a motion for that or?
Yes, you need a motion to set it to-
May I ask the applicant?
Yeah, Commissioner Wade will ask more questions.
So, by right, right now, you can, you can build Phase 1. Is that correct?
By, by right, at Phase 1, M2 allows for a gas station to be built with the, with truck facility. Yes, it does. It could be on a Phase 1 M1. Now, could that require the site below this, on that area of M1, it can be done? But yes, M2 is allowed to have a gas station and a diesel be built without going through CUP. That is by right. So, again, if there is an option, I would ask the commissioners if they would possibly before denying or not going, maybe option to have another motion and see if we get a second on that. That would be my request. Any other questions, Mr. Commissioner Wade?
No, I'm trying to find a solution to this. No, thank you. I will have a question for staff, maybe for the attorney. Could we approve this with anything beyond Phase 2 contingent upon a light being built there? Not a study.
So, skipping the study, essentially?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we still go back to the same issue of Caltrans and whether they...
Yeah, they may say no.
Right. So, could you do it? Could you do, could you do that condition? Yes, but you're aware that it may not have any teeth, just like you stated.
We, we run the risk of approving this, and then Caltrans won't put the light in. And then, essentially, the citizens of Bakersfield are absorbing the risk. If, if that's, if those are the minimum standards that I want for this to be approved, the city, the citizens of Bakersfield are absorbing the risk. If we were to do it that way, the applicant is absorbing the risk. Neither way, I feel is particularly fair. This is the predicament that we're in from Caltrans. I mean, I would, I would vote for that, but I don't know, I don't think I'd be very happy with it if I were the applicant.
So can I ask staff a question? Is there anything to be gained by referring this back to staff for a date, you know, after the first of the year, when there can be some powwow of some kind with the parties that need to weigh in on, you know, what their intention is for Taft Highway and how this all comes together? Or is that just kicking the can?
Chair Coleman, I don't know if there, if between now and January, there, it'll be sufficient time in order to determine...
Well, it didn't have to be January, but I didn't want to drag it out for the applicant either anymore than we're dragging it out for the opposition.
Right. And so, the answer is, I don't know how long it would take for us to get a response from Caltrans.
Does Public Works have any thoughts on that? You guys talked to Caltrans people. They taking your phone calls?
No, I don't know how long it would take.
Thank you. Director Johnson, did you want to say something?
I was just hoping to have Commissioner Wade clarify. So, so if you had a condition to add, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, it would be, prior to issuance of any permits for Phase Two, the traffic signal would be installed. And therefore, if it's not installed, then Phase Two, Phase Three would not go forward. That's what I was thinking. Again, that, that is putting the risk from the citizens of Bakersfield to the developer, which again, I don't think is fair to anybody involved. But this is the predicament that we're in from the state of California. Thank you very much.
I see Mr. Swanson is standing in the background. Are you just stretching yourself, or do you have some solution for us? Sure. You've heard our tone so far, so you...
Bob Swanson, again, thank you. The client, and again, we're not, we're not opposed to pilot, okay? I want to make sure they understand that. I think pilot would be good for the businesses around there, because they draw more people in, which would not all go to pilot, some would go to our clients. The thing I want to say is, if Phase One is allowed, can we build Phase One without extending the street to Campanione and just have it self-contained with Grule? And then, the onus will be on the applicant and Caltrans to put a signal in for the remainder. What we don't want to do is have our street inundated with trucks as Phase One.
So you'd like to see that as a cul-de-sac or some kind of turnaround there?
A short cul-de-sac, yes. And I, I don't know where Phase One is, but I'm assuming Phase One is the southwest...
It's the money shot, it's the gas station right there on the corner.
The first, the first corner. So, yeah, if they want to do that, I don't know that they need us. All the other businesses out there are making left-ins and left-outs.
So you have no magic wand for us tonight?
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wade?
The reason I don't know if that's practical, is by right, they can already build Phase One. What incentive would they have to change? So I, I want to make sure we're also, if you were to take on risk of having to put, I want to make sure you're incentivized to take that risk, that, that the development can go forward, leaving here the way you want it to, if that light can go in. If we were to start saying, backing off even from that, why would they go to all the trouble and invest all the money and take, take all that risk if they can just build what they already have by right, they can build? Yeah. I, I, I don't know that we want to move forward with that, if that's, if, I don't know if that's acceptable at all to the applicant. I don't want to make a motion and do the, all that, if we don't even know if the applicant, maybe they'd say, no, we hate this, we're gonna...
Right.
Yes, please.
Come on up. Come on down.
Next to test on Price is Right, Commissioners. Thank you again, Commissioner Wade. So to that answer, yes, we are amenable to the fact, again, if I'm understanding this right, to complete Phase One and not do anything with Phase Two unless a light is installed and applied for that light, we understand that, and we are, we have no objection to that going through that process. It's just not, we don't want, stop development, as you mentioned, of a, by right, almost use, just because we've taken the opportunity to show the development all in one phase instead of showing, coming incrementally to this, this commission, which we could have done. So that is why I think the clarification would be, is we try, we are agreement of that. We would do like to do Phase One. We could have a condition that light must be put in before Phase Two. We could take that fight to Caltrans, no problem. We've fought with them many times in the past, and we have gotten a lot of variances in the past. Again, so I, we are comfortable with that. So if that could be in a motion, a second, we will be amenable to that. And we could hopefully close this out for the holidays and not continue this on for the fourth time, kick it down the can, like you said, Commissioner Coleman. That's all that's going to happen if this gets pushed again. So...
All right, so...
Thank you.
You guys need to clarify that motion for us now. Does that usurp Commissioner Bowers' original motion?
Oh, that died.
That died, that's dead, okay.
I don't want to muddy the waters.
But you're going to, aren't you?
A by-right use does not require a conditional use permit. So they could, in essence, withdraw their request, build this portion, whatever's permitted in the M1 and M2 by right, and then come back for a conditional use permit, once they figure out if they have that, for the truck stop. They can build a truck stop, the truck parking, but they don't, they don't need a conditional use permit to build the convenience store. They don't need a conditional use permit to do the truck repair area.
So they could build that and then...
It's ministerial.
Come up with some other, some other application for the remainder of the land that doesn't require a CUP?
That is one option. Or you could have the option that's before you, which is just approve the conditional use permit with the, with the condition. And that way, we're here, and we're done, the light gets in, and then the project moves forward. They don't have to come back.
All right, Commissioner Wade would like to ask another question.
Well, I just, since, since by right, they can already do Phase One, then what we're give, what we're doing here is we're giving them the right to do the whole plan that they want to do. And what we're saying is, they can have that right for Phase Two and Phase Three, conditionally, conditional upon that light. So, yes, they could instead walk away and build Phase One, but if they want to do, if they want to have the same sort of uses that they're going to, that they want for Phase Two and Phase Three, they still have to come back to us first. And, yeah, and, yeah.
Right, no, no, and I'm, I'm just saying that they, they don't need your approval for Phase One, and actually, for Phase Three, they really don't need your approval.
But they do for Phase Two.
Yes, they do.
Which is what, why the light is what triggers that.
Correct. Which is where your trucks are going to come from anyway primarily, right?
So, we're waiting for your guidance to make the motion that's based on what we just talked about?
And so, if I understand correctly, the motion would be, again, the mitigated negative declaration approval and approve the CUP. Prior to implementation of Phase Two, a traffic signal shall be installed.
And the block wall.
And, well, that's already a condition of approval. It's already standard condition of approval. Is that, is that clear?
I think that was clear. Now, the question is, do we have a commissioner that wants to make that motion?
Sorry, I thought I just did. Yes, I make that motion.
That was Commissioner Wade and...
I'll second Commissioner Wade's motion.
And Commissioner Bowers is second. All right, we're almost there. Let's see. Can we have a vote thingy? Thank you. Take your screens back, here we go.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bashertish, Biddle, and Kater absent.
All right. Did you have some comment for the, to read, Director Johnson?
Thank you, yes. Chair Coleman. Decisions of the commission are subject to appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected. Appeal must be filed in writing within 10 days from the date of the commission's decision. Appeal must be addressed to the city council and include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the project, identify the decision appealed, and address facts and reasons why the commission's decision should not be upheld.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communication items?
I do, if I could have the clerk put up the other slideshow. So Dana is retiring at the end of this month after 40 years, and tonight is her last planning commission meeting. Yes. Safe to say, some of the current commissioners were not even born when she started work with the city. So Dana, Dana, if I could have you come over here, please. Well, I'd like to start with a couple of facts about the city of Bakersfield at the start of her employment. The city population was 105,000 compared to the current 400,000. That's evident, you can see northwest Bakersfield, Snow Road, Coffee Road were basically the boundaries. You look at southwest Bakersfield, it was basically Gosford and White Lane being the boundaries. The median household income, 21,000 compared to the current 63,000. Medium home price was 55,000 compared to the current 331,000, and median rent was $440 compared to the current $1,300. Although Dana did not immediately start as a secretary to your commission, it is interesting to note that, and you'll like this, Mary Kay Shell had just become the first woman elected mayor of Bakersfield. The planning commission in 1980 was comprised of Thomas Fallgatter, Ben Phipps, Ben Horn, Mary Jones, Jill Haddad, Stephanie McCormick, and Barbara Lomas. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, I had that page break wrong. And Barbara Lomas was a commissioner when Dana officially started as secretary to the planning commission on January 5th, 2006. I would note that Dana's first meeting, the minutes for that were 17 pages long, as you see there, and compared to the two pages currently. And that meeting adjourned at 11:15 PM compared to 7:15 PM currently. So Dana, thank you and your husband for giving so much of your time to the city. And we have two plaques for you. The first being from the planning commission, serving with distinction and excellence. Thank you, Dana. And the second from the Bakersfield City Council in recognition of your 40.25 years of service. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Commissioners. Hard to believe when I was hired, when I was 10 years old, that, that I would work for 40 years for the city of Bakersfield. I was thinking today about my career, and I was a senior at West High. And I remember going into the college and career counselor's office, and I asked him if he knew if there was any part-time jobs for, for me, because I was going to be starting college in the fall, Bakersfield College. So I submitted my application to the police department for the cadet position, part-time. So as they say, the rest is history. So, yeah, I was, started my career 40 years ago with the city, at the police department. And I would like to thank my family and the planning department, and especially my husband Harold for the immense support throughout my career. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dana. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number eight, commission comments.
Do any commissioners have any comments? I'll just make one comment. I want, this is our last meeting of the year, so I want to express holiday greetings to all the planning staff and all the people that have supported us for the last year. Thank you very much. Happy holidays. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number nine, adjournment.
That's fine. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.